Good evening and welcome to the regular board meeting of the Los Virginas Unified School District of October eighth, two thousand and twenty-four. A reminder to please silence your cell phones and that the meeting is being recorded. Our first order business is flag salute if everyone would please stand. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice. Thank you very much. Report out of close session. The Board of Education voted four to zero to approve the settlement agreement with employee number PM two-two-nine-zero-one-two-seven. Approval of tonight's agenda.
I'll move to approve tonight's agenda.
I'll second.
Thank you. Student Board member?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Thank you. We have an agenda. Approval of minutes?
I move to approve the minutes of September twenty-fourth.
I second that.
Thank you. Student Board member?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Thank you. Staff Board communication, Dr. Step.
Madam President, we have a recognition we'd like to start off with. If our president of foundation is ready, do you need some time or are you ready, sir? Fresh out of a trial. So as they gather themselves, we appreciate the foundation. They have been a strong partner for Los Virginas for about fifteen years now. They've contributed over two-point-five million dollars to all of our schools. It's the only organization that raises funds. The only organization that raises funds for all of our students at all fifteen of our schools. Their events have now become mainstays in the community. The carnival is a must-go-to. Poker night is gathering in popularity and the Battle of the Bands is also becoming a must-to event to check out some of the headliners like The Expendables.
Might be. Thanks for having me. President Cutbill, members of the Board, Dr. Stepanowski, Cabinet, on behalf of the Foundation for Los Virginas Schools, together helping education, it's my honor to present our grant for the two thousand and twenty-four school year. And this year, we are again presenting the school district with one hundred thousand dollars.
Wow.
So, a- as you know, the foundation serves several purposes. First, we help raise funds to help bridge the gap between what the state provides and what our community wants for our schools. We're especially focused on raising money to help the school district support mental health, reduce class sizes, and provide additional STEM education. In addition, through our fundraisers, we try to build a stronger LVUSD community. Last year, we held our successful carnival. We introduced our first annual poker tournament and we had another incredible Battle of the Bands. And then we capped off the year with our awesome casino night. This year, we're already off to a very strong start. Our annual appeal raised over twenty-five thousand dollars. This year's carnival was the most successful ever, grossing over two-hundred-twenty thousand dollars. And we had over fifteen thousand members of the community join us at the carnival.
Oh, that's tremendous.
Next week, we are holding our second annual poker tournament, which will take place at Topanga Social. And we will once again be returning to the Canyon Club for our third annual Battle of the Bands. That's already on the books. And hopefully, we will see Doc Step and The Expendables once again and some incredible student bands from all around the district who we will shortly be sending out information for them to apply. I also want to mention that last year, we were also available to help the community in other ways as well. When a student tragically passed away at AC Stella, the foundation stepped up and provided some of the funding for the memorial. We've also started supporting the district's Measure E campaign, which won't be on the ballot for a couple of years, but we've already started putting some money aside to help out with communication for that. So, on behalf of myself and some of our board members that are here today, it really is an honor to, to lead the foundation and represent the district and help with the community in fundraising. And as always, I thank all of you for your support, for attending our events and getting the word out, and really just for helping out the kids. So, thank you.
Thank you. And, and thank you to your entire board. You have a team of mighty workers who do great things and we appreciate them so much and all that you and your team do for the kids in our district. We are endlessly grateful.
Thank you. We always say we have a very small but mighty board. Every member of our board steps up and, you know, provides every, every bit of support they possibly can.
And we want a picture with your board and this board and a check.
And our big Publishers Clearinghouse-style check.
Dr. Step, that was great. Sorry, I just love, I mean, I appreciate them so much and we are so tremendously grateful and looking forward to all the coming events. And I love the way the carnival was just, it was the biggest deal around this year and it was just perfect weather and.
I'm sure connecting dots that shouldn't be connected, but the beer and wine garden were the biggest ever and the crowd was the biggest ever. People know how to party in this area.
Going to always sponsor beer garden.
Excellent. What do you got, Ms. Klein?
Are we having tech issues? There we go.
Ah, here we go. Awards first and love to lead off with academic awards. And so both Agora High School and Calabasas High School were selected for the AP Honorable and the AP Access Award. So both schools expanded the number of students taking courses, taking exams, passing exams, and subpopulations. It's quite a trifecta of awards and so we're super thrilled with that recognition and designation. And for Agora High School, it's doubly wonderful in that they've got the International Bachelor Program and the Advanced Placement Program as well. Next slide, Ms. Klein, and there's a letter about Calabasas High School also. Both got the same exact recognition, so we're thrilled to have that in place. I think last board meeting, I shared some of the data on students taking tests, pass rates, that kind of thing. Next slide. A chance to be at the Real-Time Watch Center ribbon cutting. This is at Lost Hills Sheriff Station. And behind the deputies and Jackie Irwin and Ben Allen and Supervisor Horvath is the Real-Time Watch Center and that is the partnership we have with Lost Hills Sheriffs, where if there's a situation, an emergency situation in the community or at schools, they can access our cameras and coordinate a response to keep students and schools safe. It's a unique partnership. This is the first of its kind watch center in all of LA County and we are the first school district to have such a partnership with the sheriffs as well. Next slide. Ms. Cutbill spoke last night at a community gathering in support of our Jewish community. Ms. Cutbill's comments were outstanding, from the heart. She shared information about what the schools are doing relative to creating and welcoming and inviting and positive school culture. Obviously, there are challenges throughout the world, in Europe, in Ukraine, in Africa, and of course, the Middle East. And those tensions everywhere impact our students, our families, and our community, our staff. My heart breaks every time I open the newspaper with some of the things that are going on to innocent lives everywhere. But Ms. Cutbill shared our partnerships with the Anti-Defamation League and No Place For Hate, our partnerships with Museum of Tolerance, including the upcoming bus that'll be visiting us, staff felt moved on there, and leading in many, many areas. And our goal really is to help our students become the kinds of leaders and adults we want them to, to be contributing positively to culture and supporting each other and lifting each other up despite differences and diversity. Next slide. We also had our International Walk to Schools Day, was fantastic. Top left was Linderer Canyon with our board president, our administrative team at Linderer Canyon, and council member Debbie Lopez from Agora. Bottom left and right-hand side were Yerba Buena Elementary, where we also had council member Jeremy Wolfe joining us. Lot of fun. The participation at schools I was at was off the charts. So, so much fun. Crossed the, so, next slide. And we've been busy. I guess we like a good parade and getting out on the streets. And so Saturday was also Reyes Adobe Parade for Agora Hills. That was a fantastic parade. Grand Marshall was our very own LVUSD parent, Jerry O'Connell, on the top left-hand side there, huge supporter of our schools and fan of Los Virginas. And we definitely appreciate his support. And both pictures are of the band. There was supposed to be a picture of the cheerleading choir in there. Yeah, the cheerleaders. So, all right, we got a double shot of the band. Everyone loves the band. Next slide. And just fresh from today, the logo is on our vehicles. So we had all of the district logo, district vehicles in the district parking lot here the last couple of days. All got a good washing and then had their logos added to it. They look fantastic. They pop. They were sort of customized for each of their different vehicles. I didn't take twenty shots, but buses are different than trucks, they're different than some of the minivans and some of the SUVs, but all look fantastic and it's great to have those out there. That concludes my communication. Ms. Klein?
All right, Madam President, members of the Board, October is National Bullying Prevention Month, so we have a lot of activities going on for that. On October sixteenth, we're going to be celebrating as a District Unity Day. Unity Day is a day when we're supposed to share kindness, promote acceptance, and encourage inclusion. And the entire staff and student body has been encouraged to wear and share orange for that day in support of a kinder, more inclusive world. So we're looking forward to celebrating that day. And also, as Dr. Step mentioned, the Mobile Museum of Tolerance will be coming our way starting on October fourteenth, from October fourteenth to the sixteenth at CHS, and October twenty-first to the twenty-third at AHS. This is actually a really new program for the Museum of Tolerance. They've not had anything like this before. It's a really neat bus. You can see a picture of it at the bottom, what it looks like. There's lots of activities, a lot of presentations on the bus. And because October fourteenth, or the week of October fifteenth, is also National Digital Citizenship Week, they're doing lessons at both of our schools regarding digital citizenship as well as tolerance and inclusion. So we're really thrilled to have them here. We are going to be the first stop for this bus. It has not been anywhere else before. You may have seen Governor Newsom even just tweeted out a little bit about the bus because he was able to see it as well. The primary use of this bus is actually to extend the Museum of Tolerance in Southern California to Northern California. So we're just lucky enough to be the test run for them, which is great. They're going to come out and they're going to spend some time with our kids and we're really, really excited to have them visiting us in a few days.
Ms. Chambers?
Madam President, members of the Board, I want to share a few pictures from the most recent Personnel Law and Leadership Course that Dr. Cypress and I facilitated as part of the Classified Executive Leadership Program. In these pictures, our cohort of fifteen classified employees are providing a creative representation of the six California standards for the teaching profession. The groups did an amazing job with their creativity and understanding of the standards. And in this activity, we look forward to two more courses later on this month.
Ms. Davenport?
Madam President, members of the Board, there's been so much going on these last couple of weeks. I'm excited to share just a few things. As you know, all our schools participated in International Walk to School Day last week. Board member Stein, Dr. Cypress and I joined the amazing and wonderful staff at Willow Elementary to enjoy a gorgeous morning greeting so many students walking to school. Great turnout, lots of bracelets, lots of smiles. Also want to share a few photos of the first of a series of field trips that are providing an opportunity for all of our elementary students to experience the district's Performing Arts Education Centers. So today, every fifth grader in our district attended a performance of Diablo Architecture in Motion, a dance performance. All reports were that the kids just loved it and really enjoyed the experience in the pack. So each grade level over the course of this year will see an age-appropriate performance that I'm sure they're going to love. And the last thing, I just want to make sure we touch the math front. Recently, our elementary math pilot teachers met for an ongoing training with iReady. They continue to dig deep into the curriculum. And additionally, on the bottom there, those two pictures are the elementary principals. They've been delivering professional development this year and we're visiting classrooms together and seeing the shifts in math instruction that are going to lead to greater conceptual understanding and engagement for all our students.
Dr. Scott?
So sorry, new microphones. I've continued my visits to classrooms and at my five school sites, which is awesome. It's the highlight of my week when I get to pop into classrooms. This slide, I was at Agora High School and Mr. Lepisto and I were walking. We actually wanted to go visit some math classrooms and along the way, we happened to hear the band class, I'm like, oh, can we stop in there? So we got to stop in and listen to some students on their instruments. And then that is a picture of part of the new broadcasting facility. It's come a long way from when I first started in July and saw the facility to where it is now, so very exciting. And then the bottom corner, I just happened to pop into one of our foreign language classes and I was so impressed. Every single student was like eyes on the teacher. I walked into the classroom, they didn't even flinch. They were just so focused on her and practicing their language. It was spectacular to see. The next slide, again, it's busy two weeks. I can't believe it was Calabasas Homecoming just two weeks ago. It feels like forever ago, but that is a picture of their student section, which they moved to the other side of the stadium and it was packed with students. Such a great turnout for the game. And then the other two pictures is the Walk to School at AC Stella. Ms. Baird was on the corner passing out erasers and then as students walked up, they were getting stickers. The city of Calabasas was passing out pencil pouches and it was a great, great day to see students start the school day. Thank you.
Dr. Cleveland?
Madam President, members of the Board, I want to share with you, can't get away without sharing some numbers. Very excited that our attendance, which already showed significant growth last year, is up point-three percent, which is, is significant, even though it seems like a small decimal that is a really significant number and a real testament to Angie Falk, the Ed Services team and our schools, as well as Brandy Rosen with the efforts that are taken to make sure our kids get to school. This is fantastic, of course, for achievement, full stop, but also helps our general fund as seen on the next slide. Just this small, this, this adjustment in attendance as compared to the attendance modeling that we did for our multi-year projections yields healthy five million dollars more that we can use for programs and services for kids. So I, I shared this with our auditor today and their jaw dropped as they said, there's no school district and there's a growing enrollment and also improving achievement. And I know just watching Angie's team work, how they've really done a lot of boots-to-ground, door knocks, phone calls, working with kids. This is not anything you can solve without a lot of high-calorie work. So exciting, something to celebrate. And let's keep it going, please, for the next seven months.
Dr. Sabres?
Madam President, members of the Board, each year, we facilitate our new training for LVUSD new employees. Over the course of the past two years, Ms. Chambers and I have now implemented, this is a monthly practice for our classified employees, as our classified employees are often hired throughout the months during the school year. This last Wednesday, we facilitated our first of ten trainings that we'll be doing this year each month, once, once per month. Had sixteen new employees attend and wanted to officially welcome them to Los Virginas.
Ms. Falk?
Madam President, members of the Board, about a week ago, the eighth graders at AE Wright participated in Kaiser Permanente's Ghosted Program, which is part of their Rise Initiative, which is resilience in school environment. And for those who don't know, Ghosted tells the story of four students who are trying to navigate high school by trying to scope with, cope with stress, anxiety, depression, and relationship issues. And I think the most moving part to me was at the end, so many of the kids came up to the four individuals there and were just thanking them and relating to what they had gone through. And they probably stayed a good fifteen minutes after the performance, just shaking the hands and thanking the performers. It was very moving.
Back to staff communication.
Thank you. Ms. Westerberg?
Madam President, members of the Board, Calabasas and Agora have been staying very busy recently. At CHS, we had our first Spirit Week and pep rally of the year. The Spirit Week had dress-up days like Matching Monday, Tropical Tuesday, and Jersey Thursday. Our pep rally and football game had the theme Tropical Paradise to match our homecoming theme. Homecoming was amazing and students really enjoyed the dance. In honor of Rosh Hashanah, Calabasas had a scavenger hunt where apples were hidden around campus and students could find them and trade them in for Hall of Bread. This week, we have freshman class selections for ASB positions, lots of college visits, and students can do yoga on Friday to de-stress during lunch. This Thursday is our annual Pink Out football game to support breast cancer awareness. And at Agora, they are entering their next month in full stride. Last week, Student Council and other student organizations participated in the Reyes Adobe Day Parade where they represented Agora High School's best. This week, Agora has a voter registration drive to increase involvement in upcoming election. Students can preregister or register to vote. They're also holding a pink purpose fundraiser to raise money and awareness for breast cancer research. Coming up, Agora has an inclusive arts and crafts luncheon with special education program, a blood drive, and girls volleyball senior night. We are excited to see what's coming up at both high schools. Thank you.
That's great. So much going on. Thank you, Ms. Stein.
Thank you. I want to also thank Mrs. Cutbill for her very heartwarming and kind words last night at the Israeli Calabasas event. It was very moving and I think the message really, and in this very unsettling time, is one of hope. And thank you, thank you again. Very, very moving. As you know, I was at Willow for Walk to School Night or Walk to School Morning. And Ms. Westerberg, you're going to appreciate the story I'm going to tell you, which has nothing to do with Walk to School Day. But at Walk to School Day, when they found out that I was a board member and we had a couple of cabinet members there, this couple, this lovely couple of an elementary student had to relay this story to us, wanted to relay it. They happened to go to In-N-Out Burger in Westlake on a Friday night, Saturday night? When was your homecoming? Saturday night, they went to Westlake, In-N-Out, and inrolls in two giant, giant buses of kids, of teenagers. And their heart kind of sank when they saw that and all these kids get out of the buses. They're like, oh, no, we better run in and order now. And he couldn't get over how polite, kind, nice that these students were. He said, I've never seen teenagers like this, I wouldn't think. And, and we're like, well, who were they? Westlake kids? No. And he said, Calabasas. They were from Calabasas High School and it was homecoming. So kudos to you and your fellow students and to Los Virginas, because we're raising kids and apparently we're doing a good job. So I wanted to share that with you. Yes, I attended the Reyes, the Night of the Adobe. Agora Hills puts on their signature event this time of year. It's a whole weekend thing. You saw that we were in the play, so it's so much fun to support Agora Hills with their fun events. And I attended the dopamine presentation with Mrs. Mangus and that was interesting. It's, they had a panel discussing with all, with all kinds of important data, the negative effects of cell phones in schools and cell, and social media on kids. So I know that is something that our schools are working on and our kids are, it's a priority for our schools to get our kids to, our students to put their phones away, off and away. And that's it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Gates?
This morning, I attended the Calabasas Chamber Education Committee meeting and the featured speakers were from Pepperdine, Heidi Bernard, Director of Communications, and Tanner Gardner, the Athletic Director. And they shared about, information about their tremendous growth in programming as well as facilities. Very interesting.
Thank you. Ms. Mangus?
So, between last board meeting and this, Ms. Cutbill and I attended the City Schools Meeting, which happens three or four times a school year. And it's with the city of Westlake Village and the city of Agora Hills. And we have a chance to coordinate what's going on with the cities as well as with the schools in those cities and with the Sheriff's Department. And it's always very informative and nice to tout all of our accomplishments and talk about any things that we might be wanting to work on. I also participated in the National Walk to School Day. I, I participated with White Oak Elementary, my kid's alma mater. And it was a lot of fun. They had music and their mascot Rory was there and, and the kids were just really enjoying it. And then with Ms. Stein, we both attended the Night at the Adobe. And, and as Dr. Stepanowski shared, we were, the three of us marched in the Reyes Adobe Days Parade. And, and yes, kudos to Ms. Cutbill for her speech last night at the Night of Remembrance in Calabasas.
Thank you. I'll just close with saying that the dopamine event was a great opportunity because the CEO of Yonder Bags was here. And so Dr. Step and I and Vice President Lawrence and I and another, one of his team, who's located in Southern California, we had a meeting in Dr. Step's office, which was terrific. For about an hour, we talked about the Yonder Bags, how they work with the success with regard to cell phones. So we're also, thanks to Ms. Falk, she's arranged us to see, go on a little field trip on Friday. We're going to see a school that has a locker situation and then one that uses the Yonder Bags. So we're trying to do our homework on different things that we might use in our schools and where they're working and what their, you know, successes are and what they've learned. So hoping to bring back more information about that. So appreciate Ms. Falk arranging all that. Moving on to the part of the agenda where we hear comments from the audience regarding items not on the agenda, I have three speaker cards. I will just take them in the order they came. If you can come to the podium and say your name, you have three minutes. There's a timer. It'll give you a warning when there's like a minute left. Just so you know, because it's an item not on the agenda, the board really cannot enter into a dialogue with anyone at this part of the agenda because that's a violation of the Brown Act. And so we're only able to sort of give the most basic of clarification questions. So, but appreciate, we always appreciate when people come down here to, to share with us and to, to come to a meeting in person. So my first speaker card is from Karen Shaffron. Hi. Thanks so much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Karen Shaffron and I'm Nikki Shaffron's mom. She's an IEP, IEP Special Ed student at eleventh grade. The reason we came today is because we feel there was an incident at Agora High School and we feel it wasn't handled properly and we wanted to bring it to your attention. So we are referring to a self-defense incident that happened on September thirteenth at school. My daughter Nikki, she got a threat by a weapon from another student, female student. We did, we, she does have it recorded from another kid. It, we have a recording and we have a text, a kind of proof that the kid wants to hit her with a brass, brass knuckles. She came to the office, she did everything right, the right way. She came to the office and complained and bring the, the recording and bring the, the text and email it to everybody. and email it to everybody. Unfortunately, nothing has been done and it ended up with an expulsion. We really, we ask you, the board, if you can consider it. We do want Nikki to finish high school. Again, she's in 11th grade and she's Special Ed kid. She had a huge trauma a couple of years ago. She went a long way. For the last two years, she has a completely clean record and good grades. And the incident occurred because it wasn't handled properly. No safety protocol were followed. Nobody let me know, my husband, nobody contacted us, nobody contacted the police. It's a real weapon, it's a real threat. And safety protocols were not followed. And that's why I'm here. And I think it could be eliminated if it would be handled properly and everything could be eliminated. And now she has an expulsion and it's, it's going to ruin her future. And I'm really asking to consider that again. We are not trying to bring names or harm anybody or do anything, but we do care about her future. And we do deserve that, we do think she deserved to finish high school. That's her home school. And we do want you to consider that. We wrote letters to everybody if you'd like, yeah.
I will share these out with the board.
Excellent, thank you. With all the information, detailed information and we will appreciate it if you can consider it and respond to it as soon as possible.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Schafrin. Julie Fruman.
Good evening, members of the board, staff and personnel. My name is Julie Fruman. I'm a licensed marriage and family therapist in private practice in Westlake and I have two children in Keneo Valley Unified School District, but I am eagerly awaiting to hear what you do with the Yonder Bags. So I'm here to talk about technology policies. I wanted to share something, there's a couple myths around how we want to handle technology in schools. And the first one is really about this idea of college readiness. And I just wanted to share this policy. It's a current policy from UCLA from their undergrad. Screen-free lecture and TA section policy. I will post handouts of the PowerPoint presentations 24 hours in advance of lecture each day. Please bring a hard copy of these notes to lecture and write additional notes by hand on your handout. You are not permitted to use laptops, tablets, phones, or phablets during lecture or TA section. This rule is designed to help you succeed. Studies show that students retain more and perform better on exams when they take notes by hand compared to on a computer. When students take notes on a computer, they tend to write everything verbatim rather than processing the information which makes it stick. Moreover, when one student is surfing on their laptop during class, this is distracting for other students. The handouts will provide all the information on the slide so that you can focus on listening to what I or the guest lecturer says and adding any additional information that you think is important. I hope this policy will allow you to be able to give your full attention to class without being pinged or poked or otherwise distracted. So I think this idea about getting them ready for college and having all of the technology out all the time to prepare them is a little misleading. There's another myth that goes around a lot and it's, it's around parent education. Now, I lead a lot of parent education in this area actually, so I think it's important to have these gatherings. I think there's a lot of collaboration there and a lot of really great ideas when parents get in the same room. But I went to the Dopamine event that you all put on. It was amazing and beautiful and I wish more parents could have been there. And I understand as a therapist that the reason why is because they're exhausted. That's why they're not there. They're overwhelmed. I'm exhausted. I've been going to all these meetings at both districts for about a year now. So it's a lot. You all must be exhausted because I know you work very hard all day and then do this as well. So I just want to say that what we really need, we need parent ed, but what we really need are for phones and all of technology to be handled differently to give, to give kids the experience of what it feels like to be totally focused. Like you, like I think Ms. Skon shared about the, the language class at Agora, that's amazing. We need more events like that. My husband and I went to a concert a couple of weeks ago where phones were not allowed. And he said, you know, I really feel that if people get the taste of what it feels like to be unplugged, they're going to want more. And really, that's how we teach people how to have responsible device use is through experience, not always through lectures. So cheers for Yonder. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fruman. And the next one is, I'm sorry if I'm going to get your name right now. A- 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 Aista? Markevichutie.
Hello, thank you for having me. I'm Aista Markevichutie. I'm a certified speech language pathologist. I work in Westlake and online. And I'm also a mother. My seven-year-old goes to Wesley, I'm, I'm sorry, White Oak. Nervous. And I just wanted to piggyback on Julie's kind of notion about phones and technology in the classrooms. I've been seeing since I've been working since 2015, the effect, the harmful effects of screens and technology on attention, attention span, language development. Just, I can go on and on, I don't have much time. I'm very aware of that. It's ticking. And I just wanted to say from as a parent and as a professional, I see it every day that our children are so distracted. They are losing communication like we are right now, looking at each other, talking to each other. They're losing those skills because a lot of us are not informed of the harmful effects of the phones and of the screens and how much are we ourselves spend on them. And of course, I'm not saying bad technology and stuff like that. I'm just saying we need to rethink it and maybe educate a lot of parents about it and really, really think about what are we using in our schools? What ages should a child, you know, have a phone in the school? You know, you see the little second, second graders on their phones walking like a little, see zombies, honestly. And it's very sad to me because I professionally see that as well. And I connected with Julie, with her organization, and it kind of clicked to me how much we are not educated ourselves. And we're just kind of leaving our kids to be in the schools as well with the amount of technology we're using. And I know that there's been a vote for no phones at schools. And I know there's a little bit of a scuffle there. So I just want to kind of encourage everybody to think about it. As a professional, I see a lot of harmful effects of phone usage, over, you know, over usage of screens overall. And I really want my child to have a childhood like we did, like playing with other kids outside. But if other kids, other of his friends are on their phones, he's going to be on his phone too. He's going to want to know the game that they're playing and all of that. Anyway, thank you for listening to me. I'm rambling. I'll get better once I attend more of these because I will, because I really, really, really want to educate other parents and professionals like you about, about what harm we're really doing to our children. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you to all our speakers for taking the time to come down here and address the board and share your thoughts with us. Moving on to Consent A.
I move to approve Consent A.
I'll second.
Thank you. Any questions about anything under Consent A? Okay. Student Board Member?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Thank you. Consent B.
I move to approve Consent B.
Second then.
Thank you. This is a board-only vote. Board?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Action Items: Approval of Change Orders with CSI Electrical Contractors, Inc. Dr. Gleason.
Madam President, members of the board, it would not be a board meeting this fall without talking about our solar installation. This is a change order related to architectural services and geotechnical services with, and also our pads as we start to implement the rollout of our solar panels. We are now, have works initiated at four of our schools with all schools expected to be completed by September, October of 2025. So we will see solar items continue to come to the board as we ratify contracts and transition from forefront to CSI.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Any discussion? Seems pretty straightforward. We're going to have a lot of.
I'll move to approve the change orders with CSI Electrical Contractors.
Second.
Thank you. Student Board Member?
Aye.
Board?
Aye.
Thank you very much. Approval of Agreement with LPA Inc. for the Agora High School Competition Pool and Sports Complex Project. Dr. Gleason.
Madam President, members of the board, as, as the board knows or Facility Committee reps know, this has been an extensive process. The Agora High School pool is intended to be funded in our Series B bond proceeds to replace the 60-year-old pool that is at Agora High School and is now failing after the earthquakes that we've had recently. It's actually leaking 10,000 gallons a day for the, back in 2022. It seems like just yesterday, we did a request for proposals and the board as well as stakeholders from Agora High School did an extensive interview process with different architectural firms. We selected LPA to help design not only the pool but the sports med facilities that might go along with it. We have spent the last, I want to say five or six months now really finalizing the contract. Contracts are key when you have a project of this scale. You'll notice that the pricing of this is in accordance with many contracts of construction of this, of design contracts and construction in that it's a sliding scale that'll depend on the actual cost of the project. So we initially will ask them to sketch out roughly a $35 million facility and then work with Facilities Committee and the board in an iterative process as well as stakeholders at our school to determine what total amount we want to spend on the pool in this next bond draw. And when we finalize that amount and we go out for bid and get a bid within accordance of that amount, that'll determine as outlined in Exhibit A, what the final cost will be.
What the final cost to the company, this, the architectural company?
That's correct, right. There'll be a separate bidding process for construction.
So regarding the $35 million, was that, is there with Measure G 100 years ago, there was some guideline or sort of ballpark estimates of what the district thought it might cost? Is that what was earmarked or?
Yeah, so it's a really great question. So every day, as you know, it gets more expensive. So time is always of the essence and, and why we're moving quickly. The pool in and of itself, we're told, is about 15 to 20 million for the 52-meter competition pool. Whether that will really hold up in, in a bid six months, nine months from now when we go for it, will need to be kind of stress tested. The other 15 million, as, as the board knows well, but for the community, there's a robust sports medicine program that has hundreds of students at Agora High School, as well as the students don't have competition or adequate locker facilities at the standard of our athletics program. So the thought was to modernize that facility that's around the pool as well. And so you have this interesting hybrid of new construction and modernization, which then also complicate the, because those are different design costs. And so really what will depend, and this will be the question, Facilities Committee and of course ultimately the board, is not the pool per se, but really the scale of the modernization of the facilities around it.
And then Calabasas also earmarked to have a pool somewhere down the line. Is that for Series B?
Yeah, Calabasas, we right now currently anticipate to do the design work in Series B and then the construction in Series C. Their geographical footprint won't allow for the same scale of a, of a pool, but we want to make sure we don't have both pools offline at the same time.
So since we're approving, and I, and I understand architect, sure, we don't, you know, the architect, we don't have anything firm yet as far as cost, but you're basing it on a $35 million project with both classrooms, sports, med complex, and, and a pool. I'm wondering if we want to approve this not to exceed 35 million. I mean, I can see, you know, as they meet with stakeholders, various stakeholders and, you know, we all want more. When we're remodeling our kitchen, then we, you know, need new furniture in the living room or the family room. So I, I'm sort of feeling like I would be more comfortable if we put a limit on this. And then if for some reason it exceeds 240 million or whatever, bringing it back to the board with the why, with the what and the why for the board to have final say on that.
I feel like that's already built in though, because we've given them that information. We wouldn't bring a $40 million project to the board and out of facilities and we've, I mean, we've sort of faked that in with them of, you know, that this, the scale of the modernization is going to be very dependent on price. You know, we're going to try and do as, quite frankly, as, be as smart about this as we can, get as much bang for our buck. So, I mean, you can set a limit, that's fine, but I, I think we've, we've all kind of, that's been out there and.
Being candid, just to help the, the conversation, what most companies want to do, as did LPA in this case, is just charge a flat rate on a $35 million pool. And we don't want to pay a flat rate on a $35 million pool facility if we're only designing a $25 million facility. But one thing I want to clarify, that price tag, whether it's 35, 25, 20, that'll come out of the Series B proceeds. The design is coming out of the Series A proceeds so that we get through the DSA clearance. So if you were to set a cap as a, as a, as a motion, it would be on the final cost of the construction, not the cost of the design, which is this contract's for.
Right, I understand that, but if we don't follow through with the design or again, meeting with all the stakeholders and, you know, we'll just add this one more classroom in. And again, my, my comments come with my experience on Measure G. And I know Mrs. Gaines is nodding her head. So, you know, it's very easy for these projects to, I mean, this is, this is one-time money and it's very exciting and, you know, just sketch out and add that one more weight room or classroom in there. So that's where I'm trying to be cautious in, in giving a cap.
Wouldn't it be the incentive for the design company to design a 35, go to the top? Because then they'll get more fees?
Absolutely. And it would be to our disadvantage if we believed, you know, because one strategy that the district could engage in is we always want to balance, you know, we have HVAC projects, roofing projects, this pool is failing, that's why it's, it's a, it's a major maintenance issue, is to fund in phases. So as state matching money comes in or later bond proceeds come in, we could do that phasing. And if we did that phasing, but we had to go back out to redesign, that would not, that would be a duplicative cost. So one of the important conversations, and this is why it's.
I don't want to design this twice because we, yeah.
That's a good point. That's a, that's a very good point.
And this is an iterative process. So this is not, we're going to go out and design, the board won't hear. This will be a process of engagement a lot with the Facilities Committee. I believe LPA is even coming to the next Facilities Committee to talk about the timeline. But that final design will have a stamp that we engage in for this, what we can see as the foreseeable future, would have the board's fingerprints on it, of course. So happy to, I, happy to go. I totally get the concern about costs. If you've met Sean Vidmas, Scott McAllister, and Julie Abbott, they're fantastic at navigating that and we put a lot of contractual protections in.
Now, I, you know, as I'm hearing what you're saying, I actually feel better about it. It's like, so, so the bottom line is if they come in and they give us plans for something big and grand and we say, okay, we're sticking with our original, but we have the plan so we can, like you said, if we have matching funds later on, we can add on, right? Something? And then we can start with, with a project and we have room to grow.
Absolutely. And really, that's the, the hard work of the time ahead is to see as state money comes in, as we know it will, and, you know, Proposition 2 is on the ballot this November, you know, how, how big do we foresee the project going even if we don't complete the entire thing in the next three years?
Okay, okay.
I mean, I feel we're being very conservative with them in terms of our, you know, simmer down now.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
But yes, I totally take on board all your concerns. I think we're going to continue to, but what you're saying makes sense.
Yeah, it does. Okay.
So do we want to?
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for LPA Inc. for the Agora High School Competition Pool and Sports Complex Project. I'll make a motion to approve the agreement for LPA Inc. for the Agora High School Competition Pool and Sports Complex Project.
I'll second.
Thank you, student board member.
Aye.
Board.
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much. Moving on to information items. Report Child Nutrition 2024-2025 Updates.
Madam President, members of the board, thrilled to have our child nutrition department come share everything they've produced, as well as, it looks like they have produce there in the back to share, which is really exciting. The work that our child nutrition department has done over the last couple of years to enhance everything from meals to service to communication to facilities is extraordinary under the leadership of Ms. Julie Abbott and Ms. Kathy Soleimani. And it's been so successful that they have made too much money. And so, now we can reinvest that money back into our schools. This presentation will share an overview of all the great things that they've done, all the great things that they're doing, the amazing team that they've cultivated, as well as a vision for the future, given that the resources are more abundant than they have been in the past.
So, good evening, Madam President, members of the board and cabinet. It's my pleasure to be here, wearing my child nutrition hat right now. And I have some wonderful team members here that I'd like to have them introduce themselves.
Hi, my name is Casey Wheat, and I work at Calabasas High School, and I'm the cafeteria manager.
Hi, Katie.
Hi, my name is Sabina Todd, and I work at Lindero Canyon Middle School as a cafeteria manager, too.
Hello, everyone. My name is Sayed Kabiri. I work at Agora Hills High School as the cafeteria manager. That's my new position there, so.
Thank you. Thank you for being here.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Kathy Soleimani, and I am assistant director, working with Julie.
Thank you, Kathy. Who does an enormous amount of work on behalf of our students, I have to say. Yes. So, do I have a clicker? The clicker's over here.
Is clicker working?
So, I want to give you a little background of what we do behind the scenes. We belong to what is called a Super Co-op. And the Super Co-op helps us with going out to bid for paper goods, for food. They also give us updated information on what's happening with food service. They put together some amazing food shows. So, they get all the vendors together and everything, so we have one location to go to to find out all the new foods that are out there available to us. I'm trying. In addition, we're a part of the USDA Commodity Foods Program, and being a part of that program really saves us a lot of money. They provide us with money based on our participation. So, annually, we pick out foods that are available to us, so they give us a long list. And some of the foods go to a processor, and some of the foods go directly to the site. So, for example, for chicken, we will send, you know, pounds of it to a processor to make chicken nuggets or chicken tenders. But sometimes they offer roasted chicken, so the roasted chicken goes directly to the cafeterias, so we can serve it fresh. Like wild blueberries, we'll make muffins with it. We also put them in our yogurt parfaits, and the same with the strawberries. And this is an example of some of the commodity foods that are available to us. And when we have the list, when the list comes out, we actually, about eight months in advance, pick all the foods that we want sent to the processors and/or to the cafeterias, eight months in advance. So, we're going to be starting that for next school year. In addition, we're part of the DoD Department of Defense, the Fresh Fruit and Vegetable Program. So, they provide us with fresh fruits and vegetables for all the campuses. They send us to, you know, cases, truckloads, however much you, you can purchase, but it's for a fraction of the cost. And so, it's a great way to supplement and to save money. We are a part of the Smart Snacks Program, and, which means that our snacks meet all of these requirements. They're less calories, right? Less sodium, no trans fat, things like that. So, those are available in our secondary sites, in the snack bars, and also in our vending machines.
And there's some new food die law.
Yeah, that's, that's, that's not part of the Smart Snacks. So, as long as it's labeled a Smart Snap program, it meets with all of the requirements.
Okay.
We also are a part of the SCSNA, the Southern California School Nutrition Association. And what this does is it's a list of all the child nutrition directors throughout the state of California. So, it's a great resource for us, so we can call them up and find out what's working at your campus, what's not working. You know, do you have recipes that you can share that are really successful? And so, it's just a great networking program for us. Here's some of the food shows that the team has gone to from the Super Co-op.
I like the idea of a food show.
In addition, we've been working really hard on training in the past few years, and Kathy has really implemented some wonderful training programs. Here's the, the staff learning about all the new regulations that are happening throughout the state of California.
I feel like those change constantly. Yeah, are you just like, yeah, sorry.
Yes. So, you, there were just some new laws, you know, food laws that just came out of California. So, you're up on all those, and you make whatever changes, and your processors make changes, and whoever's supplying, okay.
Yeah, because we have to do so much locally sourced, as you can see right behind you, or in front of you over here on our table. You can see some of the locally sourced stuff, and we have to do more scratch cooking. Those are the latest changes that have occurred.
So, is the, is the scratch cooking coming from the state? Or is that kind of like?
Well, they, we wanted, we've always wanted to do it. But yes, the state is asking that we do, is it 50%? 40%, scratch, yeah.
Interesting, okay.
Yeah, so. This is a field trip that we took the managers to, to one of our gardens here, because they can see what we're growing locally here, so that they can think of recipes and stuff so they can use in, on a daily basis. And all of that is the food that we serve, so I don't know about you, but I eat with my eyes. So.
Like this whole presentation.
Right, you got to have all the colors, right? We're no longer beige. We've brought colors to everything. You can see some of the commodity fruit right there, which is the apples and the strawberries. And on the right-hand side, Benny has made some salsa, fresh salsa for the kids to choose, and different dressing choices, things like that, so it's not all the same.
You know, once upon a time, we, we did a little field trip to nutrition, just.
Yeah, to see the kitchen updates. Yeah, we'll have to do that again this year.
When there's, yeah, well, in my next presentation, you'll see some.
Okay.
So, additionally, I, this is teriyaki chicken, the chow mein, more salads that we have available at the sites.
Now, are the salads and things like, well, I see the muffins are made there. Are the salads made from scratch? Wow.
Sandwiches are made fresh every day. Yes. So, you can see the cranberry. On the left-hand side, you can see our yogurt parfaits that are there with the blueberries. So, we get wild blueberries from the DoD, and that's part of the yogurt parfaits that we have. And on the right-hand side, the Chinese chicken salad wrap. And we have, now we are in fall, so we have some pumpkin muffins, which, yeah. And all of it, as you know, makes the kitchen smell amazing.
Oh, yeah.
So, at AC Stella is our central kitchen. And the central kitchen makes the food for breakfast and for lunch for the elementary schools. Because currently, the elementary schools are just serving kitchens. They don't cook in them. And so, the staff makes about 1,200 lunches a day.
Wow.
Wow. And they pack them on these carts to be able to be delivered by Carlos and Patrick in our delivery trucks to, to the cafeterias. So that the staff at the cafeteria receives the food, they heat it up, and then they serve it to the students. And the cafeterias, we have done some upgrades. This is at Agora High School. We, we upgraded the lighting and painted and did the floors, and yeah.
Yeah.
It's much more appetizing, and same with Calabasas High. Just really has improved from what it was before.
It was a real trip back to the 70s before.
And so, now we have our students who come into our cafeterias every day, who absolutely love coming in, and they're the best.
Oh.
Here's at AC Stella, and the staff and students enjoying the food. And on the right, that's at White Oak for our little ones.
Oh.
Now, our staff, we have other staff here, too, that help out every day, and they work really diligently. On the left-hand side, this is our central kitchen staff that make the 1,200 lunches a day.
What time do they get in? What time do they start their day?
That comes in at 6:00. Everybody else between 6:30 and 6:45.
Wow.
I just have to sit with that number. I found 3 very challenging back in the day.
I'm still cooking for 3, and it's not, yeah.
Okay.
And they're cooking it, like you can see on the right-hand side. So, they're cooking in that kitchen and making it fresh, and getting that, that amount of meals out every day. It's an amazing task. Here's some of the staff members at Lindero. Happy campers.
I was going to say, the happiest employees.
And that's why everything tastes so great, because, you know, when things are made with love, it always tastes better.
It's true.
Yeah.
That is true.
And Brenda on the right-hand side, who's scooping into the to-go boxes, she's absolutely amazing.
Yeah.
She makes everything better, and she truly does cook with love. And here's some of our student helpers that come into our cafeterias and help make sure that we can get all these great foods out on time. And they help us out about every day.
They do once a week this school year. Last school year, they were doing twice a week.
And they're fantastic. So, we also do some taste tests, because we like to bring in a lot of new foods.
I love this part, yeah.
And, yeah.
Get that job.
So, we did this at Calabasas High this last year, and the students really, you know, loved it with all the fresh fruit that was on top.
And, so when you say you do taste tests and you get feedback, is it just, you know, as they're eating it, you, you listen to what they have to say? Is there formal feedback, or is it more informal?
It's more informal. We have sent out surveys, but they don't seem to fill them out as well as, if you're standing there and you're asking them the questions.
Kids will be, students will be very honest, right? I like this, or I don't.
Yeah, or they don't.
Don't make this again for me.
Exactly. We're now teaming up with AZ Ranch.
Okay.
And this is a farm-to-fork program, so this is what we brought.
AZ Ranch is a former Agora High student.
That is correct.
He went to school with my middle son, and.
Alex did?
Yes.
And Alan is a grounds worker for us.
Okay.
That's his favorite.
Yeah, no, Alex, yes, and they are, they have a farm, stand their properties down off Canaan, but they sell it all to farmers markets. He's really grown, yes.
Yes. And this is what's on the table over here, and it's for all these beautiful produce that they brought for us today that you guys can take home.
Oh.
There's herbs, there's strawberries and berries.
The folks in the back of the room.
Yeah, that's all from AZ Ranch.
He, I, yes, I love his stuff.
And he's willing to grow what we need, so all the lettuce that we need, everything that we use on a regular basis, the carrots, the onions, things like that, then he's willing to grow for us.
I love that, that he's.
Because we need the 43 acres to do it. So, this is just an example of what they, they grow and what's in the back here for you to take home.
That's.
Right? Isn't it beautiful? Yeah. And there's nothing that tastes better than fresh fruit and vegetables. It's just the best. So, adding all of this stuff and the beautiful food has changed our participation. So, from August of 2023 to August of 2024, we made 5,360 more meals in that one month.
So, question on, how do, how do you make your money? Because isn't the state still paying for student breakfast and lunch?
That's correct.
So, how do you make your money?
By volume, participation. The more students that participate equals more money.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's a huge.
Good for you guys, really.
The state pays for, regardless of grade level, breakfast and lunch?
Yes.
The federal government did it during COVID, and then the state of California continued it, right?
We get state and federal.
Oh, we do?
Both.
But is it, is the federal for all of the meals, or low-income families?
It's based on pre-reduced and paid. So, the amount of money you get is based on that, the income. So, that equated to $34,716.55, or 55 cents, for the August, just for August. This is why we have $1.5 million to spend, that we have too much money and we got to buy some more stuff. Kathy has really taken over with the Wellness Committee, which meets monthly, and, and she has some amazing ideas. We have Parents Administration.
I can't get over that, that increase in meals. That's a 25% increase. That's huge.
Yeah. Well, I can say at Agora High School, can you talk about your numbers?
About 400, 450 lunches a day, and about 300, 350 additions, totaling about 800 to 900 meals per day, which is in comparison to last year, at the same site, there was a total of 1,000, so that's like 30, 40% risen.
So, do students have to sign up for lunch so you know how many make? They just, you do it based on?
Mm-hmm. It's our guessing game. We're pretty good at it.
And for our huge audience out there in TV land, when, when you talk about your profit, the million dollars, they should know that needs to stay in child nutrition.
So, child nutrition does not affect the general fund.
Right.
Yes.
Yeah, we're not making money off kids.
No, the, the general fund doesn't support the program. Everything that we make in the cafeteria has to support the cafeteria, from food, equipment, to salaries. So, it has to stay within that department, and it cannot be shared.
Oh, a few more bars on that, as I think it's an important point, is the, the product of success is for revenue. And, you know, it goes unsaid, but important, the impact on achievement for kids getting a nutritious meal every day.
Exactly.
And the economics of the past model, and also not having the same sales, have led to really thin margins, and that doesn't always lead to most innovative recipes with highest-quality ingredients. So, what this is pushing, and, and we're not unique in this regard, but our sales trends are unique, is to think, rethink locally sourced ingredients, rethink menus, rethink central versus a site-based cooking, which then leads to potentially fewer preservatives. So, all those active conversations will only lead to better options for kids. But it just goes, really important to state, all the reinvestment of the proceeds goes back into ensuring that we have the best meal program for kiddos.
One of the questions that, you know, I have received over the past years is, when there is like, and I'm not going to name any fast-food places that you offer, what, you know, parents assume that, you know, you're picking it up at the local one. It has totally different ingredients in it and requirements. It has to, can you explain that on camera, please?
Do you want to talk about Domino's Pizza?
Sure.
Yeah.
So, basically, we only have to use the food products that are approved, and they have to follow certain guidelines. So, if we do go out and bring in Domino's to the students, Domino's has their own specific department that does smart lunches, and they have to have their nutritional facts meet the guidelines of USDA, and they follow rigorous regulations. They have to make sure that it's whole grain, the cheese is low sodium, low fat, the sauce is low sodium. So, they do put a recipe together specifically for students that are served by the National Lunch Program.
That's great. And is that information shared with parents when they're like, oh, good, it's Domino's Day? That, you know, we're still providing a healthy alternative or a healthy choice?
Yeah, so one of our goals this year is to actually, I'm working with Tina Johnson, and we like to do a lot more social platform and do a lot more marketing, so more parents and community is aware of all these changes, and also what really happens in child nutrition, and trying to encourage them to attend the Wellness Committee. And we would also like to do some parent education nights, so those are things that the Wellness Committee is working on.
You're all doing amazing work. I mean, it looks just so delicious. Our students are very fortunate.
We're not done, though. We've got more slides.
Okay, well, I'm just.
Oh, yeah, I was just going to talk about what's, what's down the line or what's new. So, we purchase barbecues for the high school. So, now we can barbecue hamburgers, hot dogs, kebabs, things like that for the students. And in the future, we're looking to add scratch cooking in the elementary schools. And what that requires, obviously, is upgrades to the cafeterias. This happens to be Bay Laurel. We did already do these upgrades so that they do meet the requirements, but we want to be able to have that in all of our elementaries, the same thing. Kathy went out for a dishwasher grant, and we were granted it. And so, we are in the process of putting a dishwasher in the central kitchen, so less paper, less waste.
And just to highlight, that's not replacing a dishwasher.
No, that's kidding.
That is the first ever, having a commercial dishwasher, not doing it by hand, which is a big deal.
Welcome to 1980.
Right, exactly.
We also have some challenges at Chaparral and Mariposa because Chaparral is a tri-level elementary school, so it's hard for the little ones to get up to the second level within that short period of time that they have for nutrition and for lunch. So the thought is that we might look at EV vehicles to be able to have it on the lower level, to be able to serve the kids at that level. Same with Mariposa. Mariposa's enrollment has grown and they have to walk a lot further because they have to go to Sumac side to be able to get their lunches. So this would eliminate that.
An LV USD food truck. Love it. Yeah.
How cute are those?
Yeah, little electric vehicles.
Yeah.
And then this last slide says it all. Dear lunch lady, you make excellent meal. I really like your bean and cheese burritos. From Hunter.
Okay, we order bean and cheese.
Isn't that cute? It's a perfect way to end it.
I am so proud of what our child nutrition program does and puts out. And sometimes Dr. Gleason shares photos and we're just like, it's incredible, the the quality and the work you do. We are so appreciative of what you do for our kids. So thank you for being here tonight.
We also made you fresh lemon poppy seed muffins.
Oh, stop.
There you go. Spoiled today. It's always good to have child nutrition show up to a meeting.
Can you come every meeting?
Thank you. That was amazing. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And thank everyone, the rest of your team. Please let them know how much we, you don't get to go home though, because you're you're still here.
I'm still here.
You're still here.
I got the clicker.
God, I need a muffin.
Where's, where's our muffins?
It took to happen in a few years, but we all realized we don't present the same night that Julie presents. So you'll notice a double stack of Ms. Habbie tonight.
I I love the photos. Like there's, it just tells such a great story. You can talk to us about what they do, but to show us the photos of the the workers and the supplies and the food is just terrific.
Yeah, it makes a huge difference. So now we're gonna be, oh, I'm sorry, Ryan.
No problem. Madam President, do you want to move to the next item?
Let's move on to another exciting construction project update.
For those watching at home, there is the same person at the dais. That was Julie Abbott, Director of Child Nutrition, Finance, Maintenance, Operations and Bond Projects. And she is surrounded by her heads of security on both sides. So we have Scott McAllister, who is our Assistant Director of Finance, or excuse me, of Maintenance and Operations. And I think fresh off a honeymoon. Yeah, congratulations. Just got married.
On Friday.
We got you some poppy seed muffins. And then Mr. Budmaska looking, looking sharp.
I know.
As also has a brand new grandchild in the family.
Oh, congratulations.
Lot of, a lot of good stuff happening. And in spite of all those life changes, the amount of work that they did this summer is extraordinary. On top of our deferred maintenance and our work orders that we had, which is normal standard practice, we really took a chunk out of the first eighty-five million dollars of projects and required a lot of planning. And I watched this team and get the chance to connect with them on the weekly and all the behind the scenes on pushing project, construction projects forward so that they get completed. It takes a lot of nudging and a lot of nuance, a lot of creativity. And a lot of times our team is telling the contractors and the architects how to navigate a project because of the expertise we have. So we are very, very lucky to have this team. And with that, Ms. Habbie.
So Madam President, members of the board, here I am again. So we're going to talk about all the projects that we took, that we completed over the summer. We did Measure S maintenance projects. So those were two separate types of projects that we completed. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about what we accomplished. The Maintenance and Operations Department completed these projects that are listed there. The Bond Department, Sean Budmaska, completed these, this list of projects that are there. There's a couple that are still in progress. And then the Custodian and Gardeners, they also deep cleaned the campuses, they cleaned up the landscaping and they had to move teachers because we always have teachers that move from site to site or within a campus. The warehouse had to do office moves, inventory, teacher moves, they helped out with that too, and shipping and receiving. So that's all under this, our, this one department. So just kind of give you an idea. We have forty-six days to do all those projects and deep clean the classrooms and staff needs to go on vacation. So they also get to go away for their planned vacation. So we have to accomplish all of that in forty-six days. So if you've ever remodeled a restroom, kitchen, anything in your house, I can almost guarantee you did not get it done in forty-six days. So that'll tell you how amazing this is. In addition, we had four hundred and fifty-six work orders from June sixteenth to August fifteenth. So we also had to tackle all of those. And this is the staff that helps make it happen. So I'm going to hand this over to Sean Budmaska, who's going to talk to you about all the accomplishments of Measure S.
Madam President, distinguished members of the board and cabinet, thank you for allowing me to speak on the bond projects at hand. I'm gonna figure this out. So we have Agora High School. Before and after, Agora High School had changed its colors from its nineteen sixty-three
Yeah.
bow block color.
Yes, it looks so fresh and better.
And then of course, the modular two-story building that didn't match the rest of the school.
Yes, always looks like, is that part of the school? Now it's, it's cohesive.
It's beautiful.
Beautiful.
We replaced two roofs this year, which is the G Building. They're marked on the map there in the front and then the back T Building.
And these aren't small roofs. So, yeah.
Calabasas High School. We HVAC for the H Building, first floor, Phase One. That was everything taped up in there and then the site there showing where the new units are sitting opposed to on
Look at them. They're so small and new and beautiful and quiet. And yes.
And this is where the creativity of the team, just to chime in, really comes in. Initial, initial kind of consulting on this project suggested that we would need to have relocatable classrooms that were going to be temporarily on that campus, creating not only a cost, but also a footprint. And where Sean and Julie and Scott have worked to really creatively think about how we could do double or triple shifts over the summer to knock out a whole floor at a time, saves costs, but also expedite the project.
We also painted Calabasas High School.
Looks great.
So the top picture, of course, is the old one and the bottom one is the new one. And then the, I'm having a hard time seeing this far away. Oh, the lunch shelter down below, painted that. Some more pictures. To the left would be the original and to the right. Move quicker. Bay Laurel Elementary School. We added two more, one more classroom and some restrooms out on the playground in lieu of the TK Expansion Program. Turf and there's some solar pictures there going, some solar going up. Aerial view from a lift. Oh, who's that? Who is that? TK Classrooms in Room Five and Six, going into the kindergarten area, added restrooms with much-needed stairs and a ramp. That's the finished product. Interior casework and restroom, Chaparral. We have TK Expansion in the middle level. We had to create another classroom and three more restrooms inside. And that's the finished product. Portable classrooms and restrooms down below. And the field project was solar and the turf.
So great.
Process of that going on in the solar and the completed process.
Sean, I believe the students are now playing on that Chaparral field.
They are, yes.
Happy, happy kids at Chap right now.
Finally opened this Monday, clean and safe for them to play. Loopin' Hill Solar, that was our first one. Restroom, we're adding a TK Expansion there restroom. That's a build out. It's a little bit further, has a roof on it now.
Yeah.
Hillside erosion, as you see there on the left, that is actually right down the street here, that is not Hawaii. On the right is what it currently now looks like. Mariposa received a restrooms for their two TK classrooms. As you can see, trenching to, for services are, were far away.
Yeah.
Restroom finished products. We added two classrooms there as well. Round Meadow, two, two classrooms and a restroom. That's what the finished product looks like. We added TK restrooms up above and a faculty restroom in the building C. Those are the current restrooms finished. And then, of course, our field.
That looks great.
Which looks beautiful. Sumac, same thing. They had two classrooms for two restrooms going on there. Pretty much had both sides of that building torn up at one point. So White Oak, beautiful picture. I know it might be hard. I can't really see it, but there's a fence there and it's, it blends in so well. We had to do some ADA upgrades because it was a DSA project. So as you see, there's a nice drop-off zone now.
Yeah.
Safety for the kids.
Huge, yeah.
Willow, portable classrooms and restroom. And then we did a TK portable, I'm sorry, restrooms in the back for two classrooms. And those are the, and they look the same, but they're actually different. We added a fence in the front of Willow, which once again blends pretty seamless. Looks good. And then that's our TK compound or play area that opens up for the new play equipment we put there last year. Yerba Buena, beautiful set of gates there now, opposed to the prison style.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. It's so much better. Yes.
And it was short and quick, but it was a long summer, a lot of long weekends and nights. And I have
Just, just getting happy. Thank you.
Amazing.
Good evening, Madam President, members of the board, council. I'm going to talk about some of the maintenance projects that we had going on this summer. So we got Agora High School broadcasting. So this was the old wood shop. So the amount of weeks it took to gut, you've got a lot of ventilation, you've got a lot of heavy machinery in there, and they did a tremendous job getting that ready for our wonderful new adventure into broadcasting. There's just some of the walls going up. So we added filming space. So more walls going up at a broadcast. And this is the finished product. So they've got their equipment in there and they're ready to roll. This is the adjacent room, T two. So they'll be doing a lot of editing. It was the old, just plant manager's office. So we had a lot of room to work with. And on the right side, you could see the finished products. They'll be doing a lot of editing of the filming. Music room at Agora High School. So we got rid of some of the steps there. Just, they wanted to open up the space a lot more. Redid the carpeting, added paint. So you can see on the left there, the before, and on the right, the after with the carpet and paint. We also did both offices, did some upgrades for the teachers and got them some new furniture. ASB project, a former student really had some great ideas. They really wanted to spruce up an area, the ASB area, that was really, really just kind of worn down and just kind of an afterthought. So they epoxied the floor, got some fresh paint. You can see the logos on there. That's a much nicer
That looks great.
And of course, you can see the new paint.
Floor looks, yeah.
And removal of six shipping containers. Long overdue. We love to get rid of those and open up the the space.
Where do they go?
Makes my heart sing. We get rid of them.
Company took them away forever.
Oh, that's great.
We don't care.
Yeah.
They're gone.
Like, do we have to dispose of them? You hire somebody to come in?
Absolutely. They're like, you want, you want them gone forever? I said, yes, please.
Good. Yay.
Thank you.
We did repurpose one for Willow. So Agora did have one that was in really good shape. Willow had one that was not and we really wanted to
That makes sense, yeah.
So I had one moved over there and they've got all their emergency supplies. So that one is nice, safe and secure. So that worked out. We were able to seamlessly do that all in one day. Calabasas High School. Again, broadcast rooms. So a lot of PA six and seven, a lot of furniture storage. It was obviously used as storage. And the plant manager kind of made a home there at some point. So a lot of time was taken to repurpose the furniture. So reaching out to the schools, reaching out to staff and seeing if anyone, you know, could use the tables, the chairs, anything and everything that could be repurposed. The warehouse team did an amazing job helping trans, transport everything. There's some of the walls going up. This is a beautiful picture of PA six on the bottom there. So they'll be doing the editing. See, the power poles have been dropped, the computers are up, they've got storage. We redid the floor. And then up in the corner there, PA seven. And to the left, they also got a green screen room in there. Walls are painted. So they're ready for filming. L four at Calabasas High School, Fine Arts Classroom. So as you can see, quite dated. They've got an adjacent room with a couple really old kilns. We really wanted to just update, give them more storage and really clean, clean up the area. So there's some demo, heavy demo work. The slide on the right, that is the storage room where the kilns were, had a lot of stuff. So there's a lot of moving. And again, we reached out to Agora High School, able to repurpose a lot of the items over there. And you can see on the left, the before, and the right, the new cabinetry that went in there and the storage and the paint. So really just try to spruce that up, make it a lot more functional. And you can see there. And we moved the sinks and got them all set up there as well. PA three costume room, the left, the before. And now they've got the conveyor and the storage and the tables. And you could see the yellow power boxes in the ceiling there for dropdown. So they can work in different work centers there. Over at the NPR, we had some, on the left there, you could see some rotted wood, really not looking too good there. So we got rid of all that and the pillar and cleaned that up and removed it. And on the right side is the finished product. The NPR and student store on both sides. Locker removal. And just updates to the lunch area. So again, the color, just changing the canopies over. And the PFA, they got new tables. And they're all throughout the campus. And I will say, I've been there several times and I see the students hanging out there all the time now.
Those small square tables are much more conducive than the long bench.
Absolutely. They did a really great job picking them out.
Yeah.
Strategically placing them all over. And I've noticed a big difference. You go on the campus alone with the updates, you'll see in general, the kids really enjoy it and you can see the upkeep that they, the respect that they have because it's, it's just such a great upgrade there. It looks really nice. There's the before and after. Let me talk about the wonderful team at Child Nutrition.
Yeah.
So really great upgrade there. And I've been there several times and the line is way, way out the door and down by the student store to get in there. So it is really, really busy. Doing a great job. AC still, we got the, we moved the gate up so they can now buzz people in, safe and secure. Eighty right, trees in front, unfortunately, passing away. So they had them, we removed and we will be planting a mature tree there in its place. And general landscaping. And those, those are the three pine trees. And then the field. Music room, A right, paint, carpeting. We also updated the offices for the teacher. We also updated the offices for the teacher. So instead of breakout room, it's more of an actual office. And we're also working on some soundproofing with the gym right on the other side of that wall. So they're very, very happy with that. And building upstairs, safe and secure, we wanted to add this gate that got missed on the last round. So now the building is completely from top to bottom secure. Lindero Canyon, lower left-hand corner, high water table. That's actually glue coming up from the tile. So it's, happens quite a lot there and with the high water table. So
Such a high water table that when we redid Lindero, they almost had to go down, it was almost like a river running underneath. And they had to go engineers. I remember it was why a tree, there used to be what was called the eighth grade lawn and a tree would never live there because the water table would kill it.
Was so high.
Yeah.
So we were able to put a vapor barrier down.
Okay.
It's made a big difference. And we did the flooring on the building and the adjacent rooms as well for the signs.
Okay.
Bay Laurel, we went away from the nineteen eighties pediatric paint stuff there. And modernized, stainless steel, added shelves and just the, the general flow going in and out from the right to the left there for the kids. MPR flooring, before and after at Bay Laurel.
So much better.
Paint to come there as well. Teachers lounge, chaparrals. We turned some of the old classrooms. As Sean showed, we added TK there. So that was their old teachers lounge. Now we gave them bigger space. They've got in the left corner there, you can't really see it, but they got a coffee bar. So they're super excited about that.
Yeah.
Cabinets, new sink and got everything there, couches there. So they're really enjoying that. Cafeteria upgrades. So we really wanted to give her of a, you know, more functional area. So that was the before and here's the after. So we put a wall there where the blinds were, we've turned the appliances. So she's kind of can work on that central table and kind of around instead of in between. So much more functional, added the three-compartment sink. Murals, bye-bye.
That's so much better, cleaned up and nice.
This is beautiful.
This is beautiful.
Lower level. I always say it looks Photoshop. It's so vibrant and beautiful colors. And they are running around all the time down there.
The kids must love this.
Yeah, they'll, they'll love it. A lot of tree cleanup, same thing. A lot of our pines are just dying out. You can see on top of the Boys and Girls Club there, that is just giant pine cones and pine needles piled up. So you can imagine that is all over the hillside on the ramp where the kids are going from the second to the, the lower level. So we cleaned those up and it made a big difference in just the overall look of the campus. Loopin' Hills is a great shot of the farm. So that's awesome. And another shot of the farm, each classroom's got their own little cubby there of what they're planting and they're working on. So they've kind of got their own little plot there, if you will. And some other great shots. Orchard, forty-eight trees there. So it's a great overall shot.
Wow, some are starting to produce.
Yep. So a little ways off, but still, I mean, they're, they're, they're thriving. That's what's great to see. We haven't had any issues. So it's lovely to see that. This is Loopin' Hill. Inside, they had a work center on the far left there. It just kind of had a little bit of everything. And the middle there is the kind of process and the final product. They've got cabinets that go all the way around for full storage. Kind of brightened up the area and they're really enjoying that. Round Meadow, MPR. And that goes all the way through the teachers lounge, connecting to the office, the counseling center. So it really brings that whole area together.
Amazing what that changed from that old industrial hard, yeah.
Did the stage, everything there. Again, an amazing color scheme on the left there that we decided that we needed to upgrade. And so it's nice and, and really goes and falls in line with their, the, the staff lounge, which is to the right. So we really got all that tied in together. It looks really nice. Media Center.
Oh, that's, wow, that looks great, yeah.
Paint and flooring and new desk area, working area. And exterior paint.
That looked great. So good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
These are some of my favorites.
Oh, I love it. Yeah.
PFA, sorry, PFA. Sumac, the murals came out incredible.
Those are beautiful.
Yeah, really, really well done.
And I don't generally love a mural, but it's all about the execution and those are amazing.
Garden, PFA project. So they also wanted to garden. They are now starting to plant. So this is kind of a little work in progress. And you could see that on the right there, we've also got some of the stumps repurposed. And they'll, some really cool outdoor seating ideas and they're going to start planting. White Oak, again, MPR flooring. So we did a lot of MPRs this summer. Stage. So the far left is how the stage props and everything was stored. So the students would be performing in front of that. So you're kind of, kind of distracting a little bit. So on the far right is a much cleaner. It really blends into the back and lets the student shine, which is, which is what we want to see, right?
Right.
Willow, so a big difference there, the flooring and the stage. Yerba Buena, so asphalt done. It is, curing process has been completed. So this winter, we'll do the thermal coat, which will lower the temperature. So we're definitely going to look forward to that. We got a new field, so thirty-by-forty area. We wanted to really break up all
Yes, it's a lot of hardscape back there.
Absolutely. And we're doing some additional work up on the field just with our grounds team is doing an amazing job, just really giving them some more play space. So that field there also has cups built in. So what you don't see there is the umbrellas can now be strategically placed in the ground wherever they want them for additional shade. They don't need to rely on a stand. So kind of think of it like a golf court.
Yeah, that's great.
Free built-in.
I need that at my house.
And we got the Buttercup Playground.
I love the benches, I love it.
Oh, this was, this was a grant, I apologize. This was a grant. So we updated, so it's got all new. Had to really replace, had a lot of cracks on the initial turf and the play equipment is all updated. The Monument, Yerba Buena.
Looks good.
The new logo. Electric vehicles. So EV charging stations at Agora High School. Six, as you can see there, six dual port, level-two chargers are in the front there.
Okay.
And we've also just recently added two EV. This is the maintenance yard. So this is right by our Durham and our second warehouse there. We got two EV charging stations for our vehicles for maintenance and technology. That's it?
That's it. That's it.
Sorry, that's all there is.
That's like, it's, I, I've seen a lot of heavy lifts from your team over the years. This blows me away, the amount of work between Bond and MNO and how the quality of the work, how good our campuses are looking already early into this bond. I'm, I'm thrilled. I'm thrilled to see the, the food service areas look like it isn't, you know, the first Nixon administration and they just look up to date and just better spaces. I hope you're getting tremendous feedback from our staff. Because, or maybe you don't interact with them as much, but well, you get five hundred work orders. So yeah, you do. It's just making these safer, cooler, better places to work, to learn. I just love this presentation. I'm very appreciative.
Absolutely. This is amazing. I mean, so responsive to get all this work done. I mean, I am stunned and thank you and thank your whole team.
Absolutely. Yeah, the team was resilient, adaptable. It was a lot, to say the least. But just really want to shout them out. We couldn't do any of it without them. And they just fought through it and fought through it and like, we'll get there, we'll get there.
I mean, just the moving of stuff to, to, to paint, to fix, just the, you know.
Well, and, and time is, as everyone knows, time is money. You know, the longer we wait or lag on these projects, they become significantly more expensive. And to be in a place where the planning, thoughtfulness and execution was so well-done by this team, we're at a place where we can actually start talking about Series B sales a year prior than I anticipated us being able to, which is exciting. So, you know, when you do a lot of great work, a lot of great work will open up. So we're going to let the, the team take a, take a little bit of a break, but there's still a lot of great work to do. But they, they did five years of work in one summer.
Yeah, amazing. Thank you.
I think it's so great how, how these spaces are so important, how they serve our mission, our program. So thank you, thank you. And then, and now we're going to go on to our, our, our most exciting Board Policy and AR Reg forty-two nineteen point one-one, sex discrimination and sex-based harassment. This is a update of an old policy?
It is. Madam President, members of the board, one thing Julie and her team forgot to add is they helped Ed Services move into their new offices and Human Resources. So thank you very much.
How much better this space?
It's much better. It's, as you said, Ms. Cutbill, this is continuing our revision of board policies related to the recent changes to Title IX regulations. Board Policy four-two-one-nine-point-one-one. The Board Policy and the AR revisions underscore the commitment to creating a safe and equitable environment for all students and staff. Key updates include a comprehensive definition of prohibited behaviors, enhanced reporting procedures, and clear timelines for investigations. Additionally, it outlines supportive measures for victims and reinforces the district's zero-tolerance stance on discrimination and harassment, ensuring accountability and fostering a culture of respect and inclusion.
Okay. Fairly straightforward. Any questions, any discussion? This will come back to us. So, okay. If there's nothing else, thank you very much. Meeting is adjourned.